Good evening. January 23rd.
Good day, sir.
Just got to the chairman.
All right. I'll open the meeting for Monday, January 23rd, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Yo.
We're opening the meeting.
Let me just.
That's okay.
Call the meeting to order. You all rise for the pleasure, your allegiance.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Why don't we start with open forum? Sue, Patrick, Clark is here. Hi, Sue.
So far away.
Yeah, I moved it back.
I just wanted to thank everyone who has turned in their census forms already, but we still have a few more to go. So I'd appreciate anyone who has a census, please get it in as soon as possible. We have several drop boxes. There's one at the library, one at the Council of Aging. We have our ballot box open out front if you come by during, when we're not open. And we also have a couple of drop boxes right here in Town Hall.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
How are our dogs doing?
Our dogs are doing okay. They've gone down to the police now for court action. I believe we have about eight dog owners and about 12 dogs.
Okay.
Some of them are multiple offenders.
The dogs are not.
The dogs are multiple.
Not the dogs.
It's a people problem.
It's kind of not their fault.
Right.
So hopefully they'll get all those resolved and we'll be good.
Good.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. Do you want to bring us through our agenda?
We have a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, at 6:45, which we have about 12 minutes to go. So we have about 15 or so action items. I suggest we go right into those. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Second.
Second made? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to list to the Department, DPW Department Head, on how much he wants to raise our solid waste collection program.
Nice introduction.
Glad I'm no longer an elected official.
Right.
Hi, good evening. Included, I believe, in your packet is some information regarding our solid waste program. I want to thank Lynn Lundberg, our administrative assistant. She put a lot of this data together for us. Gives you some background on our program and where we are moving forward. We are at the end of our second option to extend the five-year collection contract with Republic Service. And so that contract expires June 30th of 2023. With that, we have, backtrack one minute. Solid waste collection and disposal is a Chapter 30B exempt procurement. So with that, it allows you to negotiate sort of independently from the formal invitation of bid process and such. So when you see the staggering numbers, you'll understand, though, that we have some alternatives as we look at what's the best solution for the town. What before you is a proposal and essentially that as a result of looking at what we anticipate our FY '24 collection contract expenses to look like. We have before you a proposal to adjust the annual fee for the town's current subscription-based program from $400 annually to $500 annually. Unfortunately, the world we live in over the last two years, we've seen incredible increases in operational expenses, collection expenses, labor expenses and such. And that's now being passed on to the municipalities as our contract expires. With that, the program will stay the same. There'll be no changes to the program, whatnot. There'll be no reduction in services or such, but there is an increased cost that comes with that. The proposal would be that we would adjust that price effective July 1st, 2023. So it would be reflective in the, as of that billing. We wanted to get this out in front of people, though, give them ample opportunity to look at alternatives and such. Again, remind people, this is a voluntary subscription-based service the town provides. You're not required to participate in the program. It's an enterprise account that essentially runs as a small business within the general government of East Bridgewater. And therefore, it's a voluntary program, people. Now with that, I'll give a little explanation as why to the, you know, what is this the result of? The increase? As I stated, the current contract ends on June 30th. The new proposed Republic Service three-year contract reflects a 30% increase in that collection cost from what we're paying in 2022 to 2023. And that's a one-time increase. That won't be annually, but you know, there's a 30% adjustment in that cost.
And how was that created, John?
That is a result of labor costs increased, limited disposal options, continuation of mass DEP restrictions on where waste can be disposed of, what types of waste can be disposed of. As we close landfills in our state that are trash currently, a portion of it is hauled directly from the back of the trash truck to CMass and converted to green energy. But it's becoming a smaller and smaller portion because there's limited capacity there. So actually, a lot of our trash is actually being taken to transfer stations where it's put on railcars and it's being transported to North Carolina, Ohio, things like that to handle the municipal waste because it's just essentially the, the state of Massachusetts has closed all of our commercial landfills in the state. I think there's only two that exist any longer. So that cost is, that cost in itself, we're looking at a 10% increase in that. The recycling market I've been in before, and I've talked about the recycling situation, that is not getting better as much as we've hoped that things would stabilize. You know, we've seen prices back creep up over $100 a ton for disposal of processing of recycling. So all these costs in conglomerate reflect the prices we're seeing. With that, there's some information here that, you know, will show current collection expenses versus anticipated collection expenses. Obviously, the intent of an enterprise account is that we, you know, per mass general law, we have to cover our operating expenses. So without significant reductions to services, which I don't think there's any appetite for, you know, we really are, I don't like to say somewhat hands at times, our options are extremely limited. One thing we did do, because I think it was just due diligence to look at this. So again, people know our current annual cost is $400. We're proposing tonight that we would anticipate increasing that to $500 per household.
How's that broken up?
We bill semi-annually, so twice annual on your, along with your water bill, which you receive. So we would increase that price to $500. We did go out and look for alternative proposals. The only other, what's happened is, as with everything else in the world, even the solid waste business has sort of all been conglomerated. There are two major solid waste companies left in the country, Republic Services and Waste Management. We did get a price from Waste Management. Waste Management's price actually would result in the cost of $530 a year. And that does not reflect the fact that town would have to go out and purchase $200,000 worth of collection toters. Because, you know, Republic Services has serviced us for 20-plus years. The town owns the trash barrels, but we don't own the recycling bins. So because unfortunately, we've never had the capital to make that capital purchase of, you know, 4,000 recycling toters. So there'd be some additional expense on top of that. So Republic Services' contract proposal was $825,000 a year to collect the same program we have now. It was $888,000 for Waste Management, plus another $63,000 on top of that to collect at municipal facilities, our schools and town buildings. So that $825,000 is representative of the municipal collection as well. And then we, we wanted to look at, you know, essentially the hands-off alternative. If we were to say, you know, go out and get your own haul or your own. Even that, when I was in front of you three or four years ago, we had about three different, four different companies that were providing services. We had Dooley, we had CN Noon and ABC. They have all been purchased by one company now, Win Waste. Services all of those individual contracts. And right now, that's an annual fee of $564. So although I come before you with what's a significant increase to the town's program, it's still, as we have said, and I'll say again, the most cost-effective means for disposal for the residents of our town. Currently, right now, about 75% of our residents participate in the solid waste program.
Have we seen, based on the fact that I'm hearing from people that use, other than Republic, that the other companies they have out there are going up higher? Also, have we seen any significant movement to get rid of them and come on to Republic?
Yes, yep. We're seeing anywhere between 20 and 30 new accounts per month signing on to the town's program.
If after this is made public, if we jumped a whole lot of people coming to Republic, would that change the rates at all? Would it reverse?
If we, I would anticipate that this will slow, that the people converting to the town's program will change, will slow. You know, if you were considering it, now there's not a $136 difference. There's a 30, there'll be a $36 difference. There's some convenience with just not having to make that phone call. But, so I would anticipate that we won't see as many people convert as, as we have been. I don't anticipate we're going to see a significant reduction, again, because.
They have nowhere to go.
Unfortunately, there really is nowhere to go.
Right.
It's sort of a sad state of where we are, but your options are extremely limited right now. And we, I don't want to be held to this, but our, what we're, given the current market, if it stabilizes and stays where it is, we would anticipate, though, that this $500 fee should, if everything remains stable, we'll be able to utilize and maintain that fee for a foreseeable period. You know, at least, at least two, two years of the current contract.
Did you say that last year?
No, two years ago. You said it two years ago. And we did, we held it, we were able to hold the price for two years. It does seem as though about every two years, it's just significant. One of the things, too, prevailing wage rates adjust. As those rates adjust, those costs are passed on to the municipalities. The biggest issue is really the disposal portion. We don't have any control over, really, the, we lock in the solid waste rate, but the recycling tonnage rate is so variable, it's market-driven.
Aye.
Unfortunately, they're at, yeah, I wish I could be before you, but there's five different options to choose from, but.
Well, I think one of the things, maybe people don't understand the total as, as a part of the Republic is the town, what the town gets out of that contract. And I think that's very important.
Because the fact that that contract handles all of our municipal waste collection, you know, that's a separate. In any other situation, that's a cost that would have to be absorbed by the general government portion of, of our tax base. You know, at the school department, Town Hall, fire, police, all the individual areas. Even to the fact that the containers at the, all the youth athletic facilities are all covered under this contract as well. We do try to provide a level of service. And one thing, too, that I think is important is that Republic Services is of a scale that we don't experience significant service interruptions like other communities see when they move haulers and, you know, don't work with a, with a company as safety-oriented and professionalism. Even through all the COVID and all the disruptions that other companies saw and communities saw, East Bridgewater didn't experience that. We have an excellent relationship with Republic and have worked with them in all their different phases for more than 20 years now. And again and again, I've done formal invitations for bid, requests for proposals, solicitations. Republic Service continues to, to be not only the lowest bidder, but the most competent bidder. So, and they do service the town well.
This doesn't come as much surprise to me. I remember seeing in the meeting guys had it a couple of years ago when I was blown away with, where they were transferring the waste. And I said, it's on the horizon. There's just no way that we're going to be able to stay at these rates. So, you know, even though it's extra money for sure and it's a burden, it's, unfortunately, it's still the best way.
And I still, to that point, it's still for the residents that, you know, this is still, as I see, the most equitable program available.
I think people are happy with it, too. I mean, that they might not be as happy on July 1st as they are right now, but I think people are happy with the service.
I think they ask, again, they're clean, professional, they do a good job. They're routine, they're regular. You know, you know 95% of the time, with the exception of one, you know, a driver, an individual driver's on vacation, the other driver may do the route of, but you know that at 7:30.
It will eventually get done.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if we need to vote on this now, if we want to give a period of time and have the public committee yell at us.
It's up to you. I mean, I certainly be recommending what John's presented.
The way it was presented was clear and without any question.
Yeah.
Any questions, call the DPW.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, don't call us.
But again, the pricing won't become effective until the, July 1st.
So that gives people time to make a different plan if that's what they want to do.
Yeah, and again, it's a, I stress, it's a voluntary program. People aren't required to participate in it if they can find different alternatives other than putting it on the side of the road.
Or the neighbor's trash bin, right?
We don't look where it comes from.
All right, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the fee increase presented by the DPW effective July 1st, 2023, from $400 to $500 per year.
Second.
Just made second. Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, John.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you brush my car off?
Careful out there.
I love them all, started in one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, time to go into our 6:45 public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing regarding the application for a Class II license of no more than two cars for sale to be on the site at any time. Additionally, the license should require the applicant owner shall remain in full compliance with the special permit date of January 9th, 2023, filed by George Fielsis. 60 Franklin Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., 02333. A public hearing will be held at Town Hall, first floor conference room, 175 Santos Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., Monday, January 23rd, 2023, at 6:45. Peter Spigot Jr., Carol Julius, Dave Sheedy, Board of Selecting License, 130.
Okay, thank you. The applicants, you guys, the applicants here?
Yes.
Want to come on up to the table, whoever wants to speak or?
Oh, I thought you were Ideal Club.
What's that?
Are you with the Ideal Club?
Yes.
Oh, okay, no, this is for a different.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry. Yep, this is for a garage.
Yeah, this is for.
We have nobody here that's.
They were notified of the hearing. The only, if you do approve this, so the police department, fire, planning and building have no issues with their request.
Okay.
The only thing, they have not sent proof of payment for some past due taxes. So if you are going to approve it.
And I would recommend tabling to the next.
Table? Yeah, okay.
Take care of that, sure.
I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing until our next meeting. And we'll continue it only upon.
You need a specific time.
Taxes, that's 6:45 again.
6:45?
6:45. Make motion made?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We will go back to our.
Now you're up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the change in manager of Club All Alcohol License from Ideal Club, Inc. Al Delino, Anahari Manager, 14 West Union Street, II, Ideal Club Incorporated. Susan Lotel, Manager, 14 West Union Street. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just want to identify yourself and address.
Nathaniel Landreid and.
Susan Lotel.
Susan Lotel. We lost our previous bar manager, he died this year, this past year.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So we need to replace him.
Okay.
What's your experience in managing this, Susan?
Um, well, I've done a lot of bartending and I've had a little past experience with assisting the bar manager that we had, Jeff Bloom, previously, so.
Ready to go.
Jeff, his job, he, he has his full-time job, he was traveling.
Sure. All right. I don't, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
No issues with the request from anybody.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any further questions, discussions? You have any questions yourself at all? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Could you help John with the council?
Happy managing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve unpermitted application for E. Marie Winchester of South Shore Race Management for bicentennial 5K road race on June 10th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion?
E. Marie Winchester runs that South Shore Race Management. She's been doing it for years. So we did contact her and she takes most of the responsibility for getting everything done. We're in good shape with that one.
That's good. All in favor?
Charlie, you got the date in your.
Yes.
Okay.
Good to go.
He's already warming up.
All right, motion made second, all approve?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a secondhand article license from Lisa Hogan at Bay, semicolon, right beside Joppa. Lisa Hogan, Manager, 626 Bedford Street Hours, Wednesday, 2 to 7, Thursday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion?
How did this come about, Charlie?
I believe that we ended up with a call from a resident concerning the sale of furniture at that location. And so Rebecca then followed up with a call to them saying, if you're going to be doing this on a regular basis, you need to get this license.
Okay.
And they had been sent it in, so I guess they want to get into that business also.
Okay. Anything we can do to help?
All right, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from IT Director to stripless damage equipment as listed no longer usable to the town.
Second.
Discussion?
It's all fairly interquitted, it's ready to go.
Get it out of here.
Get it going, right. All right, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and sign contract with all Colony Planning Council for a master plan project.
Second.
This has been on the books for about 40 years. Been nice to get it started anyhow during my lifetime.
Yep. Charlie, you want to throw anything out there or?
Just that, we already had agreed on the parameters of what they were going to be doing, but just because it's a state grant, I wanted to get something formal in writing, which basically, you take our generic contract, you append the parameters and we're ready to go.
Planting board's all on board with this.
Well, the short answer is I kept them in the loop. They've been informed at each step of the process. I haven't heard from anybody actually yet.
They never accepted it. Okay, let's get this approved then.
All right. All right, motion's made second. Any more further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I motion to study, talk about, request for heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Morse Avenue in East Bridgewater. Charlie?
Right, we had a resident, you know, obviously we've been talking about truck exclusions in other locations on Central Avenue, and so the resident said, well, how about Morse Avenue? Which is, and I didn't know where Morse Avenue was. I know where the triangle, obviously the common is, right, exactly. But then I looked at it and said, oh, okay, I know where it is now. And, you know, I understand the resident's desire to move the trucks from that leg of the triangle to the other legs of the triangle, but the intersection at Central and Plymouth is horrible enough as it is. If you're requiring the trucks to make that turn, which would be in an awkward angle both directions, coming off of Central on a Plymouth, or from, coming on from Plymouth on the Central, in the, we get delays there as it is, it would simply worsen things. The angles are much better for trucks coming from Central on a Plymouth via Morse or vice versa. And I couldn't recommend it, I don't know whether.
No, I would echo your comments. It would, nothing's impossible, it would be a very difficult situation if you can imagine some of those tractor trailers that traverse Morse Ave to have to come to the intersection of Plymouth and swing.
Have to turn.
Almost have to swing out into the St. John's rectory path.
Yeah.
To come back in, so they cross another, you know, the westbound lane to make that swing. Obviously Morse Ave is not the one that would want heavy truck traffic on, but it's been that way for 100-plus years.
It's got no strip on it.
Correct. And it is, it's extremely narrow when you come, when you bear from Plymouth Street on to Morse Ave, it is tight.
Right.
But it's negotiable. We actually, when we redid Plymouth Street and redid the sidewalks, we actually addressed the radius of the curb a little bit to try to help with that. But I really, I really don't see a way without taking 60 feet of the front of the town common off that you could make a radius where a tractor trailer would have the ability.
They really, they probably couldn't come up with a street anymore, really, I mean.
In a sense, and it's difficult because, you know, that's, that's.
That's 106.
106, you know, so, and so you're, even if you were to do that and say, let's say you were going to extend it, that you sent them down 106 to Whitman Street, if you put all that traffic, that same truck would have to make that turn at Route 18 up to turn back up onto Central, which.
Or cut into the parking lot here at Town Hall.
Exactly, right. So, you know.
You could put a toll booth.
Yeah, you could do that.
It must have been ruled illegal in Rhode Island.
Well, that's what I live in, it's illegal in Rhode Island.
Unfortunately, we've, we've seen a significant increase in trucking and I think we'll continue to see an increase in trucking as more and more things are delivered via heavy truck, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need a motion just to.
Well, just that unless you tell me otherwise, I will indicate to the resident that we're not going to be able to do that.
Yeah, we just can't, unless they come in and want to talk about what their plan is, I don't know how.
There's no viable alternative.
I'd say any plan that I think anyone could come up with has already been talked about, so.
Yeah.
You know, we just don't see any way we can fix the problem.
No.
Chairman, I make a motion to vote, the board to want to help actionize the amount of allocation from Plymouth County to be used for revenue reduction projects.
Second.
Second, discussion?
So earlier this month, Plymouth County had done a. So earlier this month, Plymouth County had done, um, a me, online meeting with representatives from the cities and towns in Plymouth County, you update on ARPA and the distribution, so they were ready to distribute their third round of funding, not in the sense that we get a check, but we can make use of it. One of the things they did as part of this is to say that they would allow a certain amount of that money to be used for revenue reduction projects. There were specific uses that the federal government had outlined for you, for ARPA, so for instance, public health measures, or sewer water and broadband infrastructure. However, each community was allowed up to ten million dollars of revenue reduction projects. Thing is, it's money that went into our coffers, not the Plymouth County money, so we could use it for almost anything that the town does in providing services or programs. Okay, you do, use it to reduce the debt, we can't pay our pension liability, but you want to buy a pencil, it's eligible, want to buy a police car, it's eligible.
Don't tell them that.
I know. He's smiling.
First time today.
But Plymouth County had said, even a few months ago, we're not doing that. It's not going, you, if you're going to send an application in, it's got to fit one of these categories. So everybody went on that basis. Well, I guess they got enough interest from enough communities to say, well, we're going to change our minds, a certain portion of the money will be able to be used for revenue reduction programs, it won't have to fit one of those categories. Several of the communities have already said, we don't need that money for revenue reduction, we've got enough projects already that will fit one of the categories. I think one of the communities, for instance, is a hundred percent of the money is being used for water infrastructure. What that means is that that money then can be redistributed to the other communities, it doesn't mean we get more, but the portion that we're getting, more of it can be used for revenue reduction, but only if we say yes, we want to do that. So I needed a formal vote from the board.
Even if we say yes, doesn't mean we have to.
No, you do not need. Right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, motion to discuss street lighting requests for seven sixty Elm Street.
Second.
Made second, discussion?
So we did get a resident, once you started talking about things that varies, where it means, everybody says, oh, I'd be interested in doing something too. So in this case, they wanted to have the town take over the streetlight at seven sixty Elm Street. The police department, is it Patrol Officer O'Brien, I believe, went out to take a look. His recommendation is if we're going to take the light over, that we have the light moved to nine ten Elm Street, because there are other lights along Elm Street, which we do pay for, and what it would do is moving it would space it out more evenly, so that we have a better lit road. I mean, the road is somewhat lit already. But if we were going to take the light over, that, the light be moved to that location.
Just to, uh, the light is not on the roadway, the light is actually on the backside of the pole, the light's up there driveway.
Oh. Right.
So he may not end up being happy because they probably want.
They may not want that, right.
They might want shining right on the roadway by their house, but the recommendation is of.
So they're looking for us to pay for a light that's doing their driveway?
They would reverse it, obviously, we would have it shining on the, on the road, but.
What was the light, how, why was it originally, they were building the house or something?
No, they paid for it. I mean, it was before my time. Everything's before my.
You request grid to put a light up in front of your house, if you have the, a pole, they're going to put a pole up, as long as you pay for it, they'll do it.
How much does that cost, do you know?
A hundred, a hundred and fifty a year, maybe, something on that order.
So now, is it the same resident that lives here, or is it a different resident wants us to move the light?
I don't know, again, it's before my time, I, who's ever been living there up till now.
Okay.
Has been paying for it.
Right, and they don't want to pay for it anymore?
Correct.
But I'm not too sure they're going to accept if we decide, sure, we're going to pick it up, or we're moving it.
Well, then it's not their decision.
Right.
If you, if you all said to me, Charlie, send National Grid a letter, tell them to put one at nine ten, they'll do that, they'll pay for it.
Move one to nine ten.
Yeah, well, we don't have to, I don't know if they're going to take that literal light and move it down the street.
We could put one at nine ten.
Yeah, we could put one at nine ten.
I guess, chief, I guess the question, do we need another light in that area, or you think?
No, at seven sixty.
No, but I mean, anywhere in that area with one more light?
Not much, other than this.
Right, so why don't we just?
Say no.
Right.
Okay, we can do that too.
I mean, that's just my, like, feeling, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, no, given the.
We don't need the light, why would we take it over?
The letter and observations from the police department, I think it's fine.
Right, so if they don't want it, just tell them, stop paying the bill, and they'll turn it off eventually.
Right. Okay.
Sorry, guys, I don't know if I'm late for the, uh, dealership license, I don't know if you guys.
Yeah, so we've got, um, yeah, we did, so that was at six forty-five?
Oh, I was just going to wait.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So we ended up making a motion to, for continuance.
Okay.
So it would be the next meeting, which.
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
Okay.
At six forty-five.
But you do want to contact the collector's office in the meantime and get the issue of the outstanding taxes settled.
We dropped off the payments today, so.
All right, great.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go through it with you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you'll get a notice.
Thank you, have a good night.
So we're all set with seven sixty, we're just.
Yes, I'll, I'll.
You made a motion like for that, do we hear?
No, because you're not taking any action other than saying no.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to review and sign, a signage request to be submitted by E. B., by Centennial Committee for use of signs over the next twelve months for the bicentennial.
Second.
And they'll be, as they are around town in a few spots now, as we come close to an event, we'll be moving the signs for those events.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right, motion made second, any further discussion?
I talked to Dale about it, and he just said, basically what you said, that they want to be able to put them up and take them down and not have to make a request every time.
Right, and these would be on the.
Kind of giving them a blanket.
You know, either in the shoulders of the roads, or on municipal property, and you're allowing it town-wide to have that happen.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca?
Um, so just like last year, um, so Lee in the office does the annual town report, just like last year, the, she's doing the town report cover contest.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, so we are accepting photo entries for the two thousand twenty-two annual town report through March twenty-fourth. Entries can be emailed to L N G U Y E N at eastbridgewaterma.gov. Please include your name, address, and telephone number, and the winner will have their photo featured on the front of the two thousand twenty-two annual town report.
Last year was great.
That was fun.
Lot of competition, and really a, a great result.
Yeah, so it's townwide, you know, department heads, staff, school, anybody, residents, any pictures would be appreciated.
The board's exempt, they can't do it.
I can't, no?
No.
Do some stick figures.
Get it.
I could maybe draw a triangle.
Right. Sounds good. Something should be probably presented by the bicentennial committee for.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a nice theme.
Yeah, well, it'd be a little strange because it's the.
Oh, it's the wrong, yeah.
Yeah. It's the twenty twenty-two.
It'll be next year, so next year, yeah.
I mean, it is the second, it is the two-hundredth year, it was twenty twenty-two.
Right.
We, we may do the same, we're, we're going to be putting out some type of a booklet later on in the year for a lot of different things, maybe we'll do some kind of contest then.
Sounds good. All right, is that it, that's all you got?
That's it. That's, that's scheduled there for a meeting for this year, in case you want to remember them and adjust your golf game accordingly.
I can't make it on, let's see, June twelfth, June seventeen?
June, July, August.
All right, thank you. Charlie?
You had tabled the policies at the center at St. Rock, I don't know whether you wanted to table them again or discuss them. These were on the rentals, hours closed on holidays, whether the board wanted to change that, whether they wanted to extend the holiday closing to also the holidays observed, where we had, for instance, New Year's Day was on Sunday, but we were observing it on Monday. And then the other question was on the straight pay on Sundays, where town council had recommended due to the mishmash of wage laws here in Massachusetts, that it would be advisory, advisable to change it to time and a half on Sundays, noting that the folks who are renting the hall are paying for that, the town does not have to pay more, it's the folks who are renting it if they were using it on Sunday.
Well, I, I think we should table it for another, but I think what we have to do is at the time we talk about, if we're going to do that, we'll also have to talk about the rental product, policies for Sundays, to increase that, to cover the added labor costs. And I, I do think if we're going to continue the policy of not renting on holidays, that we would have to include the days that the town is celebrating those holidays, as you said, this year, with Christmas and New Year's.
Right. Imagine, it's used pretty frequently on Sundays, so.
It certainly is.
It would be an additional cost to those people that use it on Sundays for showers and things like that.
During the, during the fall and, and spring, that, that place is booked solid. You know, during the summer, we get a lot of weddings and showers and stuff.
So could we see that, what that impact would be monetarily?
Sure.
Like what exactly that would be, it would go from this to this?
Yeah, in most cases, be based, you know, on an hourly thing, you know, for that day, it wouldn't be that difficult to put together, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we had received word that someone was going to come in about electricity aggregation again, but obviously we didn't have anybody, um, if you want me, I'll, we'll just skip over that subject, and okay?
She should have came in, I got my five hundred and twenty-seven dollar bill today, so she should have showed up, it would have been a good day.
I got mine, I got mine today too, it's up about a hundred from what it used to be.
Um, truck exclusion number two.
Moving on.
Elm Street, um, where we, we talked, so we had a resident ask about trying to reduce the truck traffic on Elm Street, and we talked about that in relation to Highland. So going back over that, there are really only a couple alternate routes. One is that we would send all the traffic up, what's it, would it be to Elm Street? I said Elm Street, so, um, alternate route would be North Bedford Street to Highland instead of going from Central to, and they would meet up there. The problem is with the warehouse facility that's coming into play at Highland, or near the intersection of Highland and North Bedford, that would just worsen the situation that much more, it's going to be difficult enough as it is. So that eliminates the idea of maybe just doing that segment, but if you eliminate all of Elm Street for truck traffic, it just moves it over to summer, which isn't any better prepared for animal traffic than Elm Street is.
Which has been a history of problems to begin.
And we would have different residents coming in and complaining about that, so my plan would be to notify the resident that, you know, we don't have a reasonable alternative to what's happening now, as much, and as John mentioned, we're seeing, especially on our main roads, we're going to see more and more truck traffic, not just because of the pandemic, that contributed to it, but more people simply are getting more things delivered, and one way or the other, with, they're doing it by truck of all sizes.
Yep.
Fire Department, they did receive an award for thirty-seven hundred eighty-one dollars for student awareness of fire education and the senior safe program, so congratulations to them for their work in getting the grants. One Stop for Growth, as much as we seemingly just ended, well, we're not ended, but we're still sort of in the middle of one cycle where we're now actually having to deliver on the basis of those awards we got last year, they're starting the cycle of grant opportunities again for One Stop for Growth, where the initial letters of interest for up to five projects can be submitted by February third, if we don't meet that deadline, then we could submit up to two as of March seventeenth. There are a few possibilities on the, we're not going to get more money for the Bedford Street one.
No.
However, I'm thinking, not so much for construction or anything like that, I don't know whether they would allow, or it'd be eligible in essence, conceptual for Central Street, in a sense of we're, we've looked, we've talked informally about whether it would be possible to increase the capacity there. Then two, if we can, again, conceptually, what other properties in the downtown section could we bring a line to? And three, where, again, you know, we're not laying it out in the detail that Weston Sampson is doing right now, in terms of specifications, but say, in front, where would we want to put the line physically so we would deliver that? I mean, as an example, for North Bedford Street, we're running it not along the road, but along the, behind the properties, what would be the best way of physically extending the line, where would we do that?
We have a connection, if you know, you might, CBS.
Yeah.
Which put a pipe into us, which is capped almost the other side of Spring Street, so the next phase, eventually somewhere down that road, would be hopefully to capture Eastern State.
Right, exactly. So what I'd like to, you know, one idea, again, I, we, through this letter of interest, I can find out, is this an eligible possibility, where we're not talking about a shovel-ready project?
Right.
We want to get an idea of what is possible to do, and then, as, you know, in the next couple of years, maybe say, okay, if, if we've got a plan in place, if we want to do something, okay, now we can start talking about design, easements, you know, rights, or, you know, construction, whatever else, but at least get a better idea of using the state's money of what might be possible for the extension. Speaking of brownfields and precise engineering, what we ran into this past year was that they won't, we can't do a brownfields grant without taking the building down, which is a site preparation grant, which is an eligible activity, so I'd like to put a letter of interest for that, to say, we're, you know, we ran into this roadblock, we understood, stand, but now you have this other grant that might allow us to eliminate that roadblock, but we got to do that first.
That'd be a great idea.
That would be awesome.
Um, open space plan, which, just like the master plan, we haven't done one in decades. The master plan, you know, does affect a little bit in open space, but open space is much broader in terms of being able to look at the recreation, conservation, open space opportunities here in East Bridgewater. Obviously, you bring in recreation and conservation, some other agencies, you know, planning, everybody else, but, um, again, it would make, having that plan would help us be able to apply for grants in the future. You know, for instance, for the Hops Playground, as an example, over in Halifax, when they built that, we were able to get fifty thousand dollars from the state because we had an open space plan, and it was one of the priorities from the open space plan. And we have enough recreational areas here that we're looking to be able to develop, that having the open space plan would allow us to apply for state grants to do that. So those were the three things I had come up with, doesn't mean there, if any of the three of you, or anybody else for that matter, has any ideas of what else, and part of this is, I'm not saying that all these are going to be eligible activities, I am, what I am saying is, at least let's find out, and we, I can put in a letter of interest for up to five, so, and I've got a couple more weeks to do so, so if any of the three of you have So if any of the three of you have something that comes up during that time, I can add it to the list as long as it's no more than five.
Okay. Something to think about.
Thank you.
And then I do, we do need to go into exec on a couple of things, on union contracts and personnel contracts.
All right. Okay, that's, that's good. Board discussion. Carol?
Uh, well, as you know, I went to the MMA conference this weekend and it was good, there were a lot of people there, there was some great speakers, I saw Charlie. So I can confirm that he was there doing his, doing his duty. One thing that really, I haven't brought this up, even though I've been on the board all this four years now, whatever it is, and I haven't brought it up because I was kind of, I thought someone will do this. But it really struck me how many boards have moved away from calling themselves Board of Selectment and now call themselves Select Board. I don't know the exact numbers, I'm sure we could get that from MMA of our three hundred and fifty. Um, have changed, but I noticed it, looking at badges that people were wearing here and people introduced themselves at meetings. I was almost like at the WeMo lunch embarrassed to say, we're a selectman. Now, I've always thought of it as a title, I never really like, I don't care, I don't think it's necessarily, for me, my personal opinion is it's not gender-specific. But I do wonder if it's something we shouldn't think about moving forward to be more progressive and in keeping with what I see happening generally, you know, across the state.
We've talked about this, you and I.
Yeah.
A number of different times, I, I have absolutely no problem with it, I think we have to go to town meeting to do it.
I think so.
One way or the other, yeah. I mean, I've seen some towns just do it via town meeting, some of them seem to have filed special legislation, but I can check with John and his group and find out.
I have absolutely no problem changing it, I use that term most of the time.
I know, I do too. But my name tag said Board of Selectmen because that's what we are, and, you know, until we change it officially, you know, we'd need to, but. If you guys are amenable, I'd love to have Charlie look into what the process would be to change it.
Yeah.
Great.
That's fine.
Great, thank you.
You done?
Yes, I'm done.
Just wondering. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone that was involved with the kickoff to the bicentennial year over at the Grace Bible School, it was incredible attendance. Speakers were good, everyone, you know, you guys did a great job over there. Um, I've heard nothing but great things that flowed along and the pop-up shop did great that night. A lot of our politicians are actually going over money and whack out with stuff, which is a good thing, and, you know, thankful for everyone that was involved. The library held a, a little get-together on this past Saturday, the old Colony History Museum from Taunton was there. And they did a great slide about the Bridgewater's and Taunton and stuff like that. And one of the great things they came out of that, she had a, a slide going on and she was showing the old hats from the eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. The old brim hats that were made out of beaver skin and beaver fur, but they were filled with mercury. And this had been going on for centuries. And that's where Frank Morris, if you know Frank, he lives in town in Pleasant Street, he, he said, that is how the expression the Mad Hatter came about. And that's been proven, you know, I went and Googled it, it's proven that people, because they had so much mercury in these hats that people were losing their minds because of that. And that says a lot about the people of East Bridgewater. But I think some of our factories and stuff like that did use that stuff and they did make them back in the eighteen, nineteen hundreds, so. Um, the next bicentennial thing is June thirtieth, a week from tonight.
No. January thirtieth.
January thirtieth. I wish June was a week from tonight.
Sorry, I'm trying to move on here. Jeff Belanger, who's been an author for many, many years, part of a New England Legends Group, he has all kinds of books out there. And he's going to be talking about a lot of the oddities of New England and the Bridgewater's and stuff like that. That's at six thirty at the library. It's suggested that you call the library and get a reservation because they, I think that may be a sellout. The one that we had for Saturday, we were about thirty people there, and again, they did a tremendous job. A week from Saturday, on February fourth, the Senior Community Center will be hosting a afternoon from one to four. We have speakers that will be talking about the history of Seachem, the property when it was bought, we'll have slideshows for showing the construction of the building during that time. We will have a pop-up shop there also, Nancy Hill and Dee Dee Rogers will be talking, and again, the politicians will be in there to say hi. We're going to have the national anthem by the choir, and then at three o'clock, we're going to have the junior, senior choir wrap up the day with a, a number of songs for the rest of the day. So everyone's invited, again, it's from one to four at the Senior Community Center. And thank you everything for participating, I think we're going to find we have something for everybody this year. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, like you said, it was a, it was a fun night, it was an event that I think you guys, as, as both me and Carol had said, put a lot of time and thought into it. I think it really came off well, so hopefully that continues as we go through the year.
It will.
Sure.
It's a great group.
It's a good time.
The committee and the volunteers are fantastic.
Yep, absolutely. Um, the only thing I got is tomorrow night, one of us is speaking at the library dedication. So just want to make people aware, if they have an opportunity to show up, I believe it's seven.
I think seven o'clock, yeah.
Seven o'clock, yeah, I think that's what they told me. So, and the dedication is, I'll let you.
It's a dedication of the young adult area in the library in memory of Connie Love, who was a longtime library employee, I hired her, I can't remember what year it was, it was a long time ago. And she worked at the public library for many years and then went to the middle school library and was the assistant librarian at the middle school. And Connie passed away last year and her family had asked people to make donations to the library, so they were able to redo this space and now they're dedicating it in her name.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it looks, it looks really good too, I brought Quinn over there. Yeah, they went, we did the scavenger hunt there.
Right.
We went upstairs and saw the room and she was, she, obviously she saw that. I can still call it Nintendo, it's not Nintendo, PlayStation, whatever it is. And she's like, what is this?
It's an electronic game.
Yeah, right.
As long as you're not calling it Atari.
Atari, yeah, no, I moved up. I'm not down where it is, yeah, right, could be, in television.
Palm.
Palm, the first.
So it's, it's nice, they did a nice job, you know, some kids up there and they were playing games.
That's great.
Playing music and stuff like that, so, so I wish you luck tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Certainly be there to support you as well. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion to adjourn open session, go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and conducting collective bargaining sessions, our contract negotiation with firefighter's superior officers, clerical DPW. Dispatches patrol officers and personnel contract with treasurer, collector, go to adjourn into executive session and not return to open session, David Sheedy, clerk.
Carol Julia, vice chair, aye.
People's don't share, aye.
We are done.
Thank you.
See you in three weeks, two weeks.